Good evening and welcome to the Town of Leamington Select Board Meeting for July 25, 2024. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will need the approval of the meeting minutes for the July 18, 2024, meeting.
I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for July 18.
I will second that.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Approval of the warrants for week number thirty. Payroll warrant number seventy, thirty-seven thousand, eighteen dollars. Appropriations warrant number seventy-one, six hundred twenty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. The totals of warrant seventy and seventy-one are six hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make a motion that we accept the appropriations warrant seventy-one and payroll warrant seventy and appropriations warrant seventy-one.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Some items that, recurring items. Animal Welfare Society, the shelter contract, one thousand four hundred twenty dollars, fifty cents. Bureau of Motor Vehicles, five thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. MSAD six, the school budget, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars, ninety-eight cents. York County, two hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred forty-nine, seventy-nine cents. Central Main Power, forty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents. Gorm Fire Department for an Intercept, three hundred dollars. Jensen Baird Legal Services, one thousand one hundred seventy dollars. Universe Corporation, ninety-four dollars, twenty-two cents. And Wex Bank, two thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. We had a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just, just for a point of reference, the county taxes that we paid for the year this month was actually, has went up thirteen point eight percent from what we paid in 2023. It was only a five percent raise from 2022 to 2023. So this was like a significant jump for this year.
More than double?
So just wanna bring that up. It's out of our control. They vote on their budget and send us a bill.
Thank you, Tammy. All those in favor? Motion carries. Onto purchase order requests. It's real small. I'll just do it. Public Works Department, a request to pay Carol materials for ADA ramp at the town hall front entrance, one hundred sixty dollars, seventy-four cents. And a request to pay Yerkes's power equipment for a pruning saw, three hundred fifty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents.
I make a motion to accept Public Works Department's purchase order requests.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Onto weekly activities. Select Board activities. I spoke with Representative of EcoMaine this past week. Back before COVID happened, we used to get reports on our recycling contamination. If a load of recycling is more than ten percent contaminated, EcoMaine charges us for household trash. When COVID happened, the individual who was monitoring that on the, on the floor where the recycling intake came in, due to safety concerns, he was removed from the floor. Now, the, the folks handling the front end loaders at that location are the ones who are monitoring for contamination. With that said, there hasn't been much contamination from the municipal, the municipalities that use EcoMaine. So it's been straight recycling. We haven't had to pay extra for that being disposed as household trash. On another note, EcoMaine is starting construction of a new recycling facility. It's going to incorporate AI technology into the sorting. And once that is near completion, EcoMaine's gonna reach out to us and see if we might like to take a tour. How about, why don't you take us through the, the whole camera situation with Spectrum?
So, yes, the last few weeks here, I've been working diligently on this Spectrum cameras install for the town. The municipal building, all the buildings actually are getting at least one, if not multiple, cameras for security. We have narrowed it down. I just put an order in for the wireless routers. Once we receive them, Spectrum will be onsite to finish the full install. These cameras and this, this whole project was funded by ARPA funds. So it was not a passed on to the taxpayers. It was, it was supplied by ARPA. The funds that we received from COVID, I believe.
COVID.
COVID time. So that should button up in the next few weeks, I hope. That, it's about the gist of the spectrum.
Excellent. Thank you, Jason. Tammy, what did you have for Select Board activities?
Do you want me to do the Parks and Rec?
Yeah, bring us into Parks and Rec.
Madison was in this afternoon to sit down with us and have a chat about what's going on this week at Camp Moamadao. And he said that there were ninety kids at summer camp this week. The younger group went to Pontecherry in Bridgeton. And the older group will be going to the Indian Cellar Preserve at Hollis, I believe tomorrow. Because if I say later this week, it's only tomorrow. It's been a very hectic summer down there, very busy. We're really grateful for all the work that goes on at Moamadao and the enjoyment that the summer camp kids get out of it.
Thank you, Tammy.
Yes, I forgot. I was also on hand here Monday. The town's yearly inspections for all the fire apparatus and public works apparatus. Most of them, the, the fire apparatus passed, with the exception of ambulance one needed a shock, had a blown shock. But other than that, our new fire truck that we just purchased passed with flying colors, so that was good. Hopefully, we should see that in service, hopefully, in the next two to three weeks, we're hoping. The engine six that that is replacing did fail for rear brakes, but that was gonna be put out to bid, so we're not gonna be repairing that. As far as the public works, the five-fifties passed. The, the wheeler, the orange wheeler, truck fourteen, didn't pass. It's gonna need some work just to, just to maintain being a dump truck. So as we go forward here in the, in the coming months, we need to really start thinking about replacement of at least one, if not the possibility of our two-wheelers as it's just approaching the fact that it is getting overabundance of repairs needed to even warrant repairing it. I think we're better off to look into the possibility of a couple of used trucks at this point. New trucks range in the three hundred to three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. So I think we can get away with hopefully researching and finding a couple of used to tide us over for the next, you know, five to eight years until we can get on a plan to try to get at least one new one on order or in the budget over the next five to eight-year period. But we've been looking, some of them, they range in the, anywhere from forty to sixty thousand dollars for, for a used unit. We definitely wouldn't wanna buy someone else's headache, so we're really spending the time to, to look closely. So we'll definitely keep you guys up to date as we move forward.
Thank you, Jason. Some other notes from the Public Works Department. They had a couple of guys wash down the town hall to get rid of the bugs and dirt that accumulate. They've reached the end of hardscrabble with the mulcher and will can be continuing shoulder work next week. The traffic mirror that was put in at the corners of Cape and Boothby has been vandalized. But we are looking into getting a new reflective lens to, to put in the, the mirror casing. They, Sean, the, the Public Works Director, he's pulled the information off of the, the speed monitor on Moimodaio Road. He noticed some damage to the sign trailer at that time, so they've removed the sign to make small repairs. But they'll be returning it. This is a reminder that it is a fifteen mile per hour speed limit on that road. What else do we got? Some people have been dumping trash on San Pon Road and North Road and at the gate at the transfer station. Want to remind everybody that really doesn't save you anything. The, the more you dump on the side of the roads, it's, it's just gonna make taxes, you know, that, that much more to, to have to cover. We're getting rid of it. Three culverts are also gonna be, need to be replaced on Shaving Hill Road. The Public Works Department is also taking care of the Norton Road dry hydrants as requested. Would you like to read off a fire?
Yeah, I got one other thing while I remembered. I received a call. We are gonna be meeting with the, with Dennis from the Maine Department of Transportation in reference to the eleven and one seventeen intersection. They, they called us, so we will be meeting next Thursday with them to discuss options going forward to try to make that intersection safer for the public and the, the people that use it, so.
Keep going, I forgot something.
I will roll into the updates for the, the fire and EMS. Weekly reports, number of calls this week is twenty-five, month-to-date fifty-six, year-to-date four hundred and twenty-four. Nine of them this week were fires, sixteen of them were EMS calls. The schedule had three vacant shifts, however, I'm assuming it was EMO that covered them. In-house, there was no scheduled trainings this week, but there were several hours spent driver and pump training, the new staff, as well doing annual driver recertifications. There are several trainings planned for next week. There was a couple of trainings as well being held out of town, the EVAC class, which is the Emergency Vehicle Operations Course. Two of our new employees had, had taken that class and also the apparatus placement class. Both trainings were hosted by the Hollis Fire and Rescue Departments. Equipment, Public Works had the new engine most of the week. They went over it, making any needed repairs. It was mostly just valves rebuilt, which was in-house. Everything did, like I said, I was pretty happy to see that pass the state inspection with flying colors. Let me see here. There are currently eight calls behind last July, month-to-date, and sixteen calls ahead of last year's year-to-date. So that would be the fire and EMS. Judy was in today and the Code Enforcement Office. As far as from seven seventeen, July seventeenth, no growth permits, four building permits, one electrical permit, two plumbing, one shoreland permit, for a total of eight fees in that timeframe with thirty-seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. Year-to-dates permits are two hundred and forty-nine and year-to-dates fees are ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Craig had three inspection, gravel pit, gravel pit inspections this week. He's only got two more to go and they will be all inspected for this year. So Greg's, Craig's making a good dent in that. I am unsure how many building permitting permits were inspected this week. They'll, she'll have to get back to us on that, but that's the updates from the Code Enforcement.
Thank you, Jason. A few other items for weekly activities. Next week, the Select Board will be having an executive session pursuant to One MRSA subsections four oh five, six A Personnel Matters. That will take place August first, 2024, at four thirty PM. And one other thing before we go into the informational bulletin. Charlie Huntress, a past select person, unfortunately has passed away. And we are going to read his obituary now. Charles Charlie Huntress, age eighty-two, passed away on July twenty-first, 2024, at Rivers Ridge Center in Kennebunk, Maine. He was born in Portland, Maine, on October seventh, nineteen forty-one, a son of the late Dr. Roderick and Bertha Haggott Huntress. As a boy, Charlie excelled at pitching for his baseball team and playing the trumpet. After graduating from South Portland High School in nineteen fifty-nine, Charlie went on to attend Boston University, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in economics in nineteen sixty-three. After graduating from Boston University, Charlie accepted a job as a commercial property underwriter with Liberty Mutual Insurance Company and moved to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. He was there that he met his wife Gemma. They were married on April sixth, nineteen sixty-eight. Charlie and Gemma moved back to South Portland, Maine, in nineteen seventy. For the next thirty-five years, Charlie held various commercial underwriting and executive positions at insurance companies, including Maine Bonding and Casualty, York Mutual, Commercial Union, and One Beacon Insurance. He also owned an independent insurance agency. Over the years, Charlie served as a chair on the MSAD six school board, president of Maine Rose Society, and a Town of Leamington selectman. Charlie loved animals and enjoyed growing roses, collecting antiques, listening to jazz and classical music, and discussing his grandchildren's many activities. He is predeceased by his son Keith Huntress, who passed away in nineteen eighty-one, and her brother Roderick Huntress Jr., who passed away in twenty fifteen. Charlie is survived by his wife Gemma Bravo Huntress, his daughter Laura Huntress, and her, and her husband Brian of Nashua, New Hampshire. Sister Lois Huntress of Asanet, Massachusetts. Grandchildren Juliana and Jackson, and many nieces and nephews. A private burial will be held at a later date. Online condolence messages can be submitted at www-mainfuneral.com. In lieu of flowers, memorial contributions can be made to the Animal Welfare Society, PO Box forty-three, West Kennebunk, Maine, oh four nine four. Now, this obituary certainly tells a, a good portion of the life of Charlie Huntress, but this individual was very important to the community of Leamington, and he will be missed. Our hearts go out to his family and we, we wanna thank Charo, Charles for all that he has done for our community. With that said, Tammy, would you, did you have anything more? Would you like to bring us home with the informational bulletin? Oh, yes. Yes, that's right. Thank you. Last year, 2023, the taxpayers of Maine, of Leamington, Maine, were undercharged by a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixteen cents. This was a discrepancy that was just caused by errors with calculations that were done. Thankfully, the overlay that we had set aside for the taxes covered this, and there is no increased contribution necessary by the taxpayers. Thank you, Tammy. I almost forgot that.
The informational bulletin for Leamington. The Select Board office hours are Thursdays, two to eight, and the on-air meeting time is Thursdays at seven. Michael Barden stated they're discussing possibly changing the hours? Never mind. Strike them. Am I supposed to read that?
I don't remember that, no.
Okay. Page two from a previous.
Must be.
Yes.
Okay. Transfer station hours are Saturday and Sunday from nine to four, and Wednesdays, twelve to four. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle windshield for the disposal of all items. They are available at the town office for twenty dollars. No sticker is required to use the swap shop. Just a shout-out again to the volunteers who man that swap shop. They have restained it and they update it and shuffle the things around and, and post about those things too. So they do a wonderful job up there. So I know we tell them that once in a while, but it's good to say it again. General Assistance Office applications are available anytime from the town's clerk office during their normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and must be signed. The Planning Board meets at the municipal complex, the first and third Monday evenings at seven. And Parks and Rec Cards and Coffee is held at the Old Town Hall Building every Wednesday from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. A lot of people come to that and have a great time, so why don't you? One other thing that we've been discussing is Planning Board meeting coverage. So we've been talking about that and, and working towards having, having coverage that would run the cameras for those nights because scheduling conflicts with our current wonderful guy in the back room has caused us to kinda look for someone for Monday nights. So we're still looking. We have options.
We have options. With that said, we will open the meeting to the public.
I just wanted to give a little deeper update to the new truck. I know you mentioned stuff that was going on with it. I have a tentative date of next week for the lettering to be done. I'm just waiting for the quote to come back, so I can do a purchase order for that. And I have Hartford. And I have Hartford lined up for, I believe you said, the week after next, which would be the same timeframe as the lettering, to switch the radios over from the old Engine 6. And the pump test is scheduled for tomorrow. As you had said, the Engine 6 failed this inspection for rear brakes. The inspections expire on the 31st, so on the 34, 31st, we'll take that truck out of service and start moving all the equipment from that truck onto the new truck. So, hopefully it'll be a very short time where we're down that piece of apparatus. And so, we should be in good shape within the next few weeks on that. As happened with Engine 7, the rumors, I guess, are that we did something bad by buying this used truck. I heard firsthand through an open phone line that I supposedly lied to the citizens because I said that the truck didn't need any work, and that is not true. So, just figured I would be open with the public in case anybody happens to be watching. I made very clear that there were, we looked at the truck and as best as we could tell, everything was good. We couldn't run the pump because the tank was empty. And so, work was done to the valves on the truck and I believe some were done more as a preventative and not necessarily because they were all bad. So, just in case anybody hears that I lied to the citizens, I encourage them to go back and look at the meeting where I spoke very clearly about that.
Thank you, Chief.
And to follow up with that, I did speak with Sean on the valves. And like I explained last meeting too, if any newcomers are watching. The valves, they're a very wearable item, especially we're out in the woods. We have, we pull drafts off dry hydrants. We're not in a pressurized zone like Portland Water District or where it's good clean water. So, the stuff where, that, that the fire companies are pulling in is, is just dirty, gritty water and it wears on the valves. It's, you know, out here, we're gonna see it more often than you would in the city. So, it's just some things, and then they're inside, you can't sell them. But other than that, that truck was, was good to go with, with the exception of the valves, which now are all new and that thing pumps great. I know you've been out with the, the newbies and having some fun.
And I'll just add to that, that the valves that need to be replaced weren't from Leamington water, right?
Right.
It's a area-wide problem because without city water, it's just the way it is. So.
But the preventative side.
We don't know how to pump, but we didn't ruin those valves and it's the water, not our inability to pump. But besides all of that, I wanted to also just do a shout out for the membership because we've been pretty busy this month and we've covered all our calls. I don't think we've had any mutual aid come in. So, people are doing really good. We've had a few more applications come in and we're not even advertising, so that's pretty cool. We've on-boarded a new EMT and we're waiting for a paramedic to finish their physical. And as long as that comes back good, we'll have another paramedic on the, on the schedule too.
Yeah, that's excellent to hear, especially for the townsfolk. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No, I just, anybody else like to speak? No? Sure?
With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:25 PM. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in and coming by. We'll see you next week.